Everybody ready? Everybody ready down there? Good evening. Welcome, everyone, to the October 22nd, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting. I call this meeting to order at 7:02. May we please have a moment of silence for, well, for my dog Nikki, who had an ulcer in her mouth last night and was in the hospital. But for whatever moves your soul, please have a, join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Any special actions today? Mr. Manager, I guess not. Okay, that leads us to our budget presentation by our Township Manager, Michael Lewis. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I start, I'd just like to thank all of our department heads who've worked diligently on this for the past eight months. Putting together these budgets is a year-round process. It's not something that starts two weeks ago. So I do want to thank all of my colleagues. As you're aware, the General Fund is the Township's general operating account, and it pays for most personnel, general expenditures, for materials and insurances. The Township realized a fund balance of approximately $6 million at the end of 2024. As in previous years, the local enabling taxes, that's the earned income tax, local service tax, and real estate transfer taxes continue to be the predominant source of revenue in the budget and is projected to be about $8.4 million in 2026. Total revenues for 2026 is budgeted for $18,916,917, including an estimated fund balance figure of $5.2 million at the end of 2025. This represents a budgeted increase of only $11,000 in revenue over this year. The 2026 budget contemplates establishing a full-time IT director position for administration and police and fire. It'll work in all of the departments, and a part-time human resources director position. The salaries and benefits for employees are budgeted in accordance with various collective bargaining agreements, and a $350,000 line item has been restored to the General Fund for roadway construction. Property and liability insurance is budgeted to increase by 15%. Healthcare by 7%. Workers' compensation insurance for 10%. Historically, the Township has relied on a positive previous year-end fund balance to offset the structural deficit in the General Fund. The anticipated fund balance at the end of 2025, as I said, is estimated to be about $5.2 million. The structural deficit is anticipated to be approximately $3,231,000. Offsetting that deficit would require a tax millage increase of approximately nine mils of real estate tax. The result of combining the fund balance for 2026, the result combining the fund balance and 2026 anticipated revenues is an estimated fund balance at the end of 2026 of $2,059,000 and change, which represents 12.21% of the anticipated expenditures. The policy of the Township is to maintain a 10% fund balance forward in the General Fund. A tax increase is not proposed at this time in the General Fund to offset the trend in operational deficit spending. However, this will likely need to be addressed in the future as additional resources become necessary or the fund balance is depleted. As far as the Fire Protection Fund, this is another fund in the Township's budget. The Fire Protection Fund pays for all expenses associated with revenue and expenses associated with the fire operation. I will note, as of this time, there is no agreement with Newtown Borough for fire coverage for 2026. The Fire Protection Fund is funded by tax revenue and assists with the costs associated with fire protection. In 2024, the Pennsylvania General Assembly passed an act amending the Second Class Township Code to allow for up to 10 mils of real estate tax to be allocated to the fund to support fire services, personnel, and equipment. The budget anticipates a contribution to the Newtown Fire Association of approximately $285,000, and a contribution to the Fire Capital Fund of $660,000 to set aside for future capital purchases. In 2024, the Township added four additional firefighters to expand paid fire coverage to seven days per week, 12 hours per day. The additional firefighters are being paid predominantly by grant funding. After year one, the salary increases, step advances, and increases in costs for benefits need to be supported by the Township. After expiration of the grant, the full salary and benefits of these employees will need to be absorbed. The grant expires next year. So this time next year, those funds will be gone from the budget. At the end of this year, recently, the Township hired two additional firefighters, bringing the total number of paid firefighters to 14. A tax increase of three mils of real estate taxes is proposed in this budget to support the Fire Protection Fund. As far as the Rescue Squad Fund goes, a tax increase of one mil is proposed at the request of the Newtown Ambulance Squad, bringing the total millage in that fund to two. The Newtown Ambulance Squad had requested additional millage revenue for capital and cost increases. The Fire Hydrant Fund remains unchanged. That fund goes to pay for maintenance of all hydrants in the Township. Debt Service Fund was established by the Township to pay down the debt. In 2017, the Township refinanced the 2012 bond for the municipal complex with a fixed-rate loan of 2.51% with TD Bank. There is a real estate tax levy of two mils to support that loan. In 2024, an additional one mil of real estate was imposed to finance the construction phase of the DVRPC LED streetlight conversion project, building, lighting, and roadway construction. The budget anticipates a contribution of $653,000 and change to the Capital Projects Fund. Capital Projects Fund funds equipment and operating supplies for various departments. It includes four police vehicles, what do they call that? Speed signs, two speed signs. There's a slew of things that are included under that fund. The Recreation Capital Fund is historically funded by developer contributions. That has slowed, so has funding that fund. That fund has been spent down over several years, so we're proposing a transfer of $450,000 to the Park and Rec Fund from the General Fund to offset the losses in revenue in that fund. Highway aid and roadway paving. Highway aid fund pays for winter maintenance, operating supplies, paving, rock, salt, equipment, and some engineering costs associated with roadway maintenance. The 2026 budget includes the purchase of a Ford F-750 dump truck for public works, structural and structural repairs to the South Drive Bridge I-beams. This was brought to our attention by the inspectors for PennDOT. As far as road paving, again, we're allocating about $700,000 towards the base bid, and then another $230,000 and change for several alternates. The base bid will be about 1.54 miles, and then the alternates together equate to about .31 miles. With 71 miles of road and an average lifespan of 20 years, the Township would need to average 3.56 miles of road paving per year to repave each road every 20 years. So as we usually do, we have a chart again this year. This chart depicts the millage and revenues for Newtown Township and surrounding Townships. The average 2025 assessed residential value is $39,283. So the revenue that would be generated from the total millage is $672.33 if, in this budget. You can see a lot of other towns, and I will point out North Hampton because they have a paid fire department, are much higher than Newtown Township. The majority of your tax bill goes to the school districts. The proposed 2026 tax increase of four mils of real estate tax equates to $157 or $13 a month. If we can have the next slide. This graphic depicts $1 of your tax bill. You can see that nine cents of it comes to Newtown Township. So the nine cents that you pay out of every dollar when you call 911, these are the folks that respond. The 2026 budget does exclude several needs of all departments, including additional police officers, firefighters, public works employees, a full-time zoning and code enforcement director, and a full-time human resource director. As far as timing and adoption of the 2026 budget, it's either recommended that the budget be advertised this evening or November 12th for its final adoption on December 10th. That concludes our report. Are any questions from the board?
If you don't mind, I have a couple of questions, specifically about the road work. I'm trying to do the math here. I'm not sure if I'm correct. The base bid says 1.54 miles, and the alternates are .31 miles. That's a total of only 1.85 miles.
That's correct.
But you mentioned 3.1, I think. Where'd you get that number from?
Point 31.
Point...
For the alternate.
Less than two miles of roads will be paved in 2026?
Yes.
Versus the almost four miles that are estimated?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you just explain for people, and myself included, about the sources of income? Like, what's the local enabling act tax and LST, real estate transfer? Can you explain what those are?
So, real estate transfer tax is a tax that you pay when you purchase a property. The Township levies a tax of one mil, and it's split with the school district. So the Township gets half a mil of every, or half a percentage of every property that's sold in the Township. That includes commercial and residential. Earned income tax is same thing. You, the Township gets one-half of 1% of wages that are earned for people working and living in the Township. When a neighboring town enacts and earns income tax, and they work outside of Newtown, that municipality will get the 1%. And the local services tax is a $52 tax that's levied annually. It goes, it used to go to support the ambulance squad. Now it's in the General Fund.
How many firefighters are actually paid by the grant that we received?
That was four.
Four?
Yes.
But we got two new firefighters. They're not paid by that?
Yes.
With regard to the ambulance squad, they requested one mil. Why are they requesting? They want to buy something, I guess?
Yeah, they want to replace a piece of equipment next year, and then another piece of equipment in a few years. They have an aging fleet, and it's necessary to replace things as time goes on. They also have rising costs, like everybody does, for fuel, maintenance, insurances.
But it's primarily for some capital purchases, like the new ambulance and stuff like that?
Yes, for capital purchases and operational expense.
I just heard that the Borough, they asked the Borough for .5 mil increase. Is that correct?
Honestly, I don't know.
I don't know. And developer contributions for the recreational capital fund. That's no longer available?
We don't have that much land development coming through here.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
We don't have that much land development applications coming through the Township anymore.
Okay. I think those were my questions. Thanks.
Anybody else with questions for the manager?
I just want to clarify something in regards to, Mr. Mack had mentioned the transfer tax, and how all the time, we take a hit sometimes with developers coming to this Township. And I know there's a development going across the street of approximately $2 million homes. Now, if it's a 1% tax, that's $20,000, of which we split with the school district, which is $10,000, propose 45 homes. So off of that transfer tax, we'll be getting approximately $450,000, correct?
Approximately, yes.
Now, I guess to live in a $2 million home, you have to be making a hefty salary. So we're also going to incur some earned income tax from the homeowners of these properties.
Theoretically, yes.
So 45, there could be two family income. So we're talking about another 90 people contributing to the earned income tax, which hasn't been calculated yet because we don't know. But these are some projections for the future that are basically positive, okay? So when people come up here and say, oh, Toll Brothers did a bad thing, well, the bad thing is that they're building $2 million homes, of which we're going to get transfer tax and also earned income tax from people living in those homes. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Madam Chair, if the Board is of a mind, the other option that I just mentioned is that the Township can elect to hang the budget this evening for advertisement, and we'll get that on the website and in the paper. But that is up to you, the Board.
Is every supervisor on board with that? Or do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay. Do I have a second for hanging the budget? Okay. Any discussion from the Board?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I would just ask the manager if he could just go through one more time the dates and the timeline, and maybe the restrictions that are associated with that.
So I'll start with the restrictions because I have it in front of me. So once, once the budget is advertised in accordance with the Second Class Township Code, if the estimated revenues or expenses are increased by more than 10% in the aggregate or 25% in any major category, the budget must be re-advertised for a period of 10 days. So...
So if we hung the budget or advertised the budget, decided to advertise the budget this evening so that citizens can see it, when would the 20 days come in?
Well, it would run, it's 20 days from the advertisement. So if, if it would be in the paper on Sunday, then the 20 days would be from whenever Sunday's date is. That's our goal, is to get it in the paper. Of course, we'll have it posted online in the morning if the Board prefers.
And of course, the supervisors are just seeing this. So we will have a chance to ask questions at our next meeting. So even though we're advertising the budget, that doesn't mean that we've looked at it and we don't have our questions prepared yet because we just got it.
We've looked at it enough. I've looked at it twice, but I still am refining my questions and answering my own questions, so I don't have to ask too many. But at the next meeting, if we decide to make changes and we have to advertise it again, is there time before the end of the year?
Yes, there's plenty of time. Okay.
Can either you or maybe our solicitor go over the percentages in changes we can make per category and per item during the course of this budget adjustment?
Yes, so I just mentioned that. So it's 10% in the aggregate. So if the estimated revenues or expenses are increased more than 10%, only increased, more than 10% in the aggregate or 25% in any major category. So it only has to do with increases in revenue or increases in expenditure. So you, the Board's option is if you want to reduce things, you can do so without having to re-advertise.
Any other discussion from the Board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of advertising the budget immediately, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all we have.
Okay. That brings us to our first round of public comment. Please state your name and where you live. Can you put the mic on?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Excuse me, I'm Maria Parambo, and I'm here. I live in the Quarters at Newtown Gate, and I'm representing the Quarters. I am also on the Board, and I'm here to speak about the parking tickets issued along Fountain Farm Lane and the situation that the, the situation that's been created. In 35 to 40 years this development has been in existence, there's always been parking on Fountain Farm Lane. Now, the Police Department has started ticketing anyone parked on Fountain Farm. When asked to start it this, it was someone higher than the chief. No names were given. I can understand that, but when it was pointed out that there are no parking signs along the roadway, it was said, "They'll be there." There will be. Excuse me, I didn't quote that properly. When any suggestion or proof that the limited number of parking spots were nowhere near the need and other alternatives were suggested with parking on one side and this and that in the other, you know what they are, they were not even acknowledged, or it was basically a no. No one offered to grandfather Newtown Gate into the fact that we have less parking spots per home. It's like, not, it's one, they're not allowed to park on the streets of the townhouses or the singles. So when there is a festive season, you're going to have cars. That's when it's a lot of cars. You can count one, two, three on the entire Fountain Farm when it's just a run-of-the-mill day. And sometimes it's, as my other neighbors told me, sometimes it's workers, and they have nowhere to park but on Fountain Farm. The reason I mention the grandfathering is what about all the variances you guys give to the shopping center? That shopping center is an absolute mess because every time somebody comes and they need 50 parking spots, but they've got 35, you go, "Well, it'll fluctuate." No, it doesn't work both ways. No information has been given to anybody that I know of in Newtown, in Newtown Gate that shows why these changes are being made. Nobody was warned. Nobody was told. It was just surprise, everybody's getting a ticket. And the attitude of some of the people that were giving the tickets, "Chief, I'm not saying you." He's been great. It was just like, "Tough, pay it." Well, anybody that's faulted, it's gotten thrown right out. Okay, the other thing that I'm here to talk about is that there was also stated by someone on this Board that any, I'm not naming names. I don't believe in that. That any overflow could park in the parking lot at the Quarters. But the supervisors who said that or agreed to that are grossly misinformed. The parking lot at the Quarters is maintained and owned by the Quarters. It is not a public parking lot. It is for residents, visitors, medical, people working there during the day. You have the landscapers, you have the snow guys, you have whomever. This is not a place that the public can park. We have signs, we have done it. It's just like the dumpsters. It's not free dumping of your trash. We have caught people. We give you one warning, and then we find you. Because we can't get our own trash in. We can't have our own people because certain sections of the buildings have many less parking spots than the others do. While 500 may look empty, the people in 100 have booked up one and 200 buildings parking lots. And any excess cars, if somebody has two cars, one parks at the resident's side, the other one must park at the other side. If a resident does not do this, they get reminded. So we're trying to keep our spaces for our people. Simple as that. And we're not going to pay for the overuse of it. We've just had it repaved a couple of years ago. No, we are 59 units, and it's a very tight, as you all know, the budget, and we are 55-plus. So we can't just arbitrarily raise taxes or, excuse me, not taxes, the HOA fees. Another supervisor was said to have suggested that we pave the tot lot and use it for overflow parking. I don't know who said that, or I do, but I'm not going to say. That, if you think this is a fire swarm, if this is an annoyance, do that. Or force the, it's our thing. It's, we don't, you don't get to say, "We're going to pave that." No, it's our property. Because I'm also on the master board. Not only do residents, and they park alongside the parking lot on Fountain Farm, because they're bringing their little kids in to play. Not only is it parents, it's grandparents, because we have a lot of grandparents, and they bring their grandchildren, they walk them over. The other day, a lady said, "Oh." I said, "Why did you visit somebody?" "Oh, no, I'm at the lot, at tot lot with my kid." I said, "You can't park here." She said, "Oh, I'm so sorry. I was told I could." So whatever, whoever said it, now it's spreading around. We have signs everywhere, in the parking lot, entering the parking lot, saying, "It is private parking." So I really would request that stop saying that because it's not accurate. We, as, I'm going to talk for the Board, we would welcome the conversation with anybody, the person or persons who decided to initiate this, whose idea it is to just blatantly just say, "Tough, you're just going to live with it." That's not how this Township has ever worked. And I've only been here since 2005, so 20 years. But I've never seen something like this. That no one will state, "Who directed the chief to do this?" Speaks volumes to us. Because somebody's hiding somebody. If you will not say, you say someone much higher than I. No, that says somebody's playing a game. I'm being honest. I'm being honest. And just in closing, we didn't want a doggy daycare 500 feet away from our development. We fought tooth and nail, and we got our lawyer involved. There's no doggy daycare to bark 24 hours a day, because it wasn't, it was a thing to keep them all the time. We were successful, let's just put it that way. We were successful in that endeavor. We do not want this escalating. We do not want arbitrary parking rules be put upon our neighborhood where, because they can't, you can't park anywhere else if you have company over, without dialogue. There is no communication between the township and the residents and the boards of Newtown Gate. And that is what I'm requesting, because this is just ridiculous. Thank you very much for listening.
Okay. Should I say something about the police? We don't give them, okay.
Hi, John D. April, Newtown Grant, biggest and the best. Maria has a good point. Now, I'm not familiar with all the streets in Newtown Gate, but the newer developments that they built after Newtown Gate have parking on one side only. I don't know if you could do that there?
Yeah. They're good, can they correct?
Yeah.
Long enough, big enough.
Right, so there you go. I mean, there's an answer to that. I know when Chief Pascolini was here, a lot of the people on my cul-de-sac were complaining about, it would have added two legal spots, but they wanted to take the no parking on one side, only sign down. In fact, the guy did, and then put it back again, knew who it was. But, you know, hey, give them that benefit, you know, make them park on one side of the street and might solve most of their problems. Also, I should ask then, what was the figure for increasing the budget? Was there a figure for that? The budget going to hang? Add so much more to the taxes?
It was four mils.
Add four mils? You know, Newtown's a great place to live, and I know a lot of the stuff you mentioned, you know, increasing the staff and all that stuff, it's needed to keep it a really nice place to live. And it is getting larger, and, you know, getting larger all the time. But Phil had mentioned the $2 million houses next door. It's funny that this afternoon, I just seen a Realtors ad that, contact them for new construction houses in Newtown, and it was Lyonsdale or whatever they call themself. And the highest priced house there, of course, it would go over that, you know, once they add stuff to it, was $1,900 and something thousand. And they even had one house that was below $1,000, it was $900 and something thousand, different models, they had four or five different models that they were proposing. But, you know, easy to say, you know, 1.92 million, but they're all not $2 million houses, and I wanted to get that across. Then again, you guys, you know, I know Democrats trip on their feet, blame their shoelaces and all that stuff, but you guys are saying stupid things like Marie May brought up and, you know, things you don't know about, and you're just blabbing, and, you know, I don't know why you do that. And that's it for now. Remember, no queens in Newtown. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
Good evening, Melissa Merk. I live on Wright's Road. Back in June, Ed Merriman came to the podium, and he asked the board to confirm that the sewer plant project was dead. And the sewer, and the board, excuse me, did so confirm. Over the past couple of weeks, Ed and I are candidates, we talk to a lot of residents, over the past couple of weeks, we have heard the same story repeated to us from neighbors across the township, that the sewer plant, they've had people come to their doors and tell them that the sewer plant is not actually dead, and that it's still being built, and that it's going to cost the taxpayers a lot of money. I don't believe any of that to be true, but I've heard it now from so many people that I feel I need to respond to it, and I need to bring it to the board's attention, that this is happening, that this misinformation campaign is going on in our township, and it concerns me greatly. I believe that the sewer plant project is dead, and I would oppose any efforts to revive it. I would ask the board if you could again confirm that the plant project is dead.
I can confirm that the sewer project is dead, has been dead for months, will never be built. So mistruths are what you are hearing.
Thank you very much.
Fran Haller, Newtown Grant. Now, you say the sewer treatment plant is dead, it will never be built, but yet, at the meeting at the Sewer Authority, I asked specifically, when those words were used, that could you post on your website that this project is canceled? And Mr. Shankman said, "No, he could not use that language because of a board of view," which I don't know what that means, but he will not use the language canceled. Canceled means, it is true, you say dead. I want to hear the word canceled. Now, Ms. Merk, you said about mistruths. In fact, Mr. Merriman, your running mate, responded to a May 2025 survey from Stop the Plant Group and stated no comment when asked about building, the building of the plant.
Can you address us, please?
Well, okay.
Not them.
Only after public pressure grew did you change your position. Convenient to do that after public outcry shows a failure of principles by not saying no from the very start. And that's what this information is based on, the no comment. If you knew that you were against the sewer treatment plant, you would have come out and said no right away, Mr. Merriman.
Valerie Mahalek, Newtown Walk. The problem here is transparency. The problem with transparency started last year in 2024, when $9 million was spent, our $9 million, without ratepayers even knowing. The project was not properly vetted. As a matter of fact, in 2013, to resurrect the sewer plant behind George School was brought up, not a dime was spent. However, public opposition existed in 2013. The residents said no. Yet, in 2013, 2023, our existing Sewer Board, which by the way, for those who don't know, because a lot of people I talked to don't know, it is a bipartisan board that exists of three Democrats in the township and three Republicans in the borough. In 2024, they made the decision without any of us knowing, and here's where the problem begins in transparency. They spent $9 million. $9 million. No public meeting, no referendum on a ballot to ask us if we even wanted it. That's wrong. And right in that moment, most of us didn't even know about this until January of this year. How did we find out? Not through any of you. We found out through Middletown Township residents who showed up here begging that the township would not even consider this because it was in their backyard, the people from Swan Point. This is how Newtown residents found out. So from the beginning, the way this whole thing unfolded, and I include everyone on that board, three Democrats, three Republicans, all along I have said to every six members on there, I am just as unhappy with their lack of transparency across the board. And I say this as a former elected official myself. We had a piece of property in Yardley, it was the old magnet site, it was looking to be developed. We didn't go behind the residents' back and make decisions. We didn't spend any money. What we did was we had public meetings, and we gave the residents choices. There was a commercial proposition for a truck depot, there was a residential proposition. The residents said, "No commercial, they wanted residential." They had input. And the problem here is we have a member sitting as a board of supervisor who is on the Sewer Authority Board. And at no time did that person disclose in any public Board of Supervisors meeting, or particularly in the December 11th presentation, that $9 million was spent. As a matter of fact, no one in that presentation says that $9 million was spent. What is said in that meeting? Money was spent. Money, like it's Trump change, like, "Oh, he spent a couple hundred dollars." $9 million, and 47% of our rate bill went up. As a matter of fact, I was at the first sewer meeting where two 78-year-old women came in, and they said, John Mack, you were there with us, and you remember, these beautifully dressed women, and they said, "I don't know what happened to my sewer bill, and I don't know if I can pay it." Remember, no one asked for this. So when people say about, you know, "It's not true," you don't spend $9 million without the intent to move forward. And all along, this problem has been the way it went down. There was no honesty, and our sitting board of supervisor never said a word that this was going to happen. Newtown deserves better.
I would say that the Board of Supervisors sent a letter to the Sewer Authority stating that every single member of this board was opposed to the sewer being built. Therefore, we made it very clear that nobody was for it in a timely manner. Thank you.
Ed Merriman, Newtown Walk. First, the person who responded about the thing. You know, what they're describing is a graphic on a Facebook page, so take it what you want. It's a graphic on a Facebook page. My position's been clear since I started to run, no sewer. And I would ask a question. If I'm not mistaken, the Sewer Board and the supervisors are a different organization, correct? And if I'm not mistaken, that the supervisors don't tell the Sewer Board what to do. In other words, they're, right? In other words, it's not like the supervisors ordered the Sewer Board to do anything. So when you come up here and say, "It's the supervisor's fault," I don't feel like that's a proper understanding of how the supervisors work and what their job is. In fact, when they were presented with people who said, "We don't want the sewer plant," they reacted by saying, "Okay, no sewer plant." To me, that seems like democracy in action. So I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager, may I ask a question about the supervisor's responsibility? We have input at the 5, when we do the 527 plan?
537, yeah.
537.
Yep.
And that has to do with the stormwater or the?
Sewage planning for the township.
Sanitation.
Has anybody asked for any revision of that plan?
No.
Thank you. There you go. Can't do it without a revision of that plan. Nobody wants to revise it. It's dead. Thank you.
Tom McConigal, Newtown Township. I have a couple undisputed facts about the sewer plant. Fact, the sewer plant is not dead. The current motion was to stop work on the project, just as it states on the Sewer Authority website today. It could be resumed at any time. Fact, no permanent resolution or motion has come forward as of today to cancel the project. Fact, our Newtown sewer rates increased by 47%, in part to cover the $9 million used to purchase the land. Fact, the residents of Newtown were never given the chance to voice their concerns or opposition. Fact, the land was formally condemned by May of 2024. Fact, Newtown residents were not informed of this until December 11th of that year. So that means eight months went by with no word from the member that sits on both the Board of Supervisors and the Sewer Authority. Fact, Newtown supervisors are subject to the ICMA Code of Ethics. Tenant nine of those ethics states, "Keep the community informed on local government affairs, encourage and facilitate active engagement and constructive communication between community members and all local government officials." There are guidelines for that tenant. The guidelines state, "Members should ensure community members can actively engage with their local government, as well as eliminate barriers and support involvement of the community in the governance process." None of that can happen if you sit silent on the board. So there is a violation of the Code of Ethics that people of Newtown deserved to know about this project when members on this board were well aware of it.
I would just say, I was not aware myself, and a long time ago, I was told by people I would get in trouble by having a Facebook page and interacting with the residents. And, you know, I never believed that. I believed in informing the public of what's going on, and frankly, I've had nothing but trouble doing that. And I just want to mention that. And also, I would mention that the new cost of that land is $11.5 million because of a court case by Mr. Worthington's group, saying that the purchase price of $9.5 million was not fair enough. And I think it wasn't a court, it was some kind of other, what do you call it?
Board of view.
Anyway, it was raised to 11.5. I don't know if that means further increase in rates or not. I haven't been to a Sewer Authority meeting in a little while, so I'm just saying.
At the next Sewer Authority meeting, a vote will be taken on what happens to that land, so you will hear very quickly the fact that it is not going to be used for any kind of sewer facility, and you will hear exactly what's going to happen to the land. We just, it has to be voted on by the Sewer Authority. We already know what's going to happen. There is no plant being built.
And I would just mention that Mr. Fisher, who is on the Sewer Authority Board, has requested that the Sewer Authority have later meetings in the evening so that the public can more easily attend. I don't know where that is going, but we're making an effort to open this up for participation by residents.
When I was placed on the board, I made that pledge to open up meetings, and with the way we were, it's very difficult to do it in the evening, but we are videotaping them. You can watch them, there'll be a link on the Sewer Authority website, and people can stream them as they need from YouTube.
They can watch the meeting that night or the next day.
Good evening, Charles Foyer, Newtown Walk. Thanks for the presentation on the budget, and certainly thank you for the services that we all get here in Newtown. I think the more recent conversation, there's some great points that are made, especially in light of the transparency of the whole sewer treatment plant project. And I think from what I've heard from everybody, and it's certainly cognizant in my mind, is because I think it affects everyone, both behind the Diaz and out here, what is the Sewer Authority going to do with our money? going to do with our money? Because I believe that money, nine or 11, depending on the bungling that was done, is Newtown Township and Wrightstown and those served by this Sewer Authority. And it's my question to the Board of Supervisors, are we, as their customers who've already realized a 47% increase in our rates, are we allowed to find out from the Sewer Authority what's going to happen with our $9 or $11 million? Thanks very much.
Anybody else for public comment? Okay, moving on. There are no minor approvals, so we will move on to reports of committees, boards, and commissions. So first, Peggy Driscoll from our Planning Commission will give her report.
Hi, good evening. Peggy Driscoll, Chair of the Planning Commission. We met here last night. We had quite a few zoning hearing, board apps, and land development. The first item on our agenda was the SALDO Amendment for native plants. This ordinance guides the township for native plants to be used for subdivisions and land development. The Commission voted unanimously to recommend that the Board adopt this revised ordinance from Ms. Fountain, our planner, that will check, and she will check that two of the native trees, the Canadian hemlock and the American beech that are prone to diseases, are removed from the list of approved trees. Next, we had four zoning hearing applications. The first one was for Sean Dorsey at 9 Clearview Drive. The applicant is seeking a special exception to construct an addition on a non-conforming lot. There are no other variances that were needed. The Commission recommends that the Board take no position on this application. Next, we had Jonathan Arnold at 527 Linton Hill Road. The applicant is seeking a special exception to build a two-story addition on a non-conforming lot and variances for a front yard setback of 5.8 feet and rear yard setback of 35 feet, and to build a swimming pool in the front yard. The front door of the building does not face Linton Hill Road. The pool will be fenced and screened. This is a home that was built in 1818 and is already very close to the road, and the setback variance will align with the existing building. The Commission voted to recommend that the Board take no action on this application. Next, we had 1784 Holdings at 98 Upper Silverlake Road. This applicant is seeking a variance to build a storage facility at the site of the closed TD Bank. Variances for loading dock requirements, deep slope disturbances, holding parking and reserve, and surrounding the facility with a physical barrier wall supported by the Planning Commission, which recommends that the Board take no position at the zoning hearing board. The Commission members were not unanimous on the variance request to permit a dwelling in combination with the business. The applicant would like to include a residential apartment for the full-time manager caretaker of the facility. On this request, the Commission voted four to two in support of the variance. Two members felt strongly that the current ordinance should be upheld. We also reviewed these plans as part of a sketch plan review and had a similar vote. Those supporting the request felt that the presence of a caretaker can provide additional security and help keep the facility clean. Lastly, we had the Newtown Racquetball Club at 120 Pheasant Run. The applicant is seeking variances in connection with the existing NAC wall sign on the bypass side of the building instead of on, I'm sorry, which received, the NAC wall sign which received a variance in 2014, but the sign was not installed until 2019 on the bypass side of the building instead of the Penn's trail side of the building. The applicant is seeking relief to allow the sign to remain in its current location, to allow two more, more than two signs, and to exceed the maximum of 20 square feet. The Commission voted five to one to recommend that the Board take no position on this application. And lastly, we had land development for 473 Lower Dollington Road, the preliminary as final plan. This plan subdivides a 10.54 acre parcel into three lots. Two new lots will have single-family dwellings, and the original house is preserved. A new private road is created to provide access to the three homes. The Commission recommends that the Board approve this plan, subject to the number of conditions, including compliance with the review letters of CKS engineers, Remington and Vernick engineers, and the Bucks County Planning Commission. The applicant has agreed to alter waiver requests, and will install a sidewalk along Dollington Road frontage, and will provide a street light at the entrance and an additional light at the end of the dead-end street. The applicant has also agreed not to use the word Willow in its street name. The Commission supports the other waivers sought and recommends the Board approve this plan. And that was all we had. Any questions?
I had a quick question. Why did they, why were they asked not to use the word Willow?
Because Willow Drive is right down the road.
Oh, okay.
Well, it was Willow Wood or something similar. We just thought too close.
Yes, I got it now.
Any other questions for Ms. Driscoll? Thank you for your report.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Board Member reports. I have no report this evening. So, Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, I would like to, I'm glad Maria and her folks are here. I took a walk with Chet Niamba last Thursday, and we walked the whole length of Fountain Farm Road. We gave each other ideas and rejected each other's ideas and so on and so forth. But one thing that enlightened me was the fact that there's three separate homeowners associations that also meet together as a, as a, as a master board. Okay. I gave several suggestions, and these would be long-term suggestions, but most of the, most suggestions that each of us made had to do with the homeowners association having to agree for finding parking. Now, the parking on one side, I am told that as far as the township and PennDOT goes, that it would not be allowed. Well, still, they have some guidelines that we have to follow. I suggested paving some, some green areas, which, again, would have to be decided by the homeowners association. So if that's rejected, and Chet, well...
Excuse me, excuse me. Please sit down. He's still, a Supervisor is talking right now.
No, that's not for members' comments.
This part of the agenda is members' comments, so. So anyway, we pointed out a couple, a couple of the green areas as possibilities. Chet actually suggested an area where the retention basin exists. And that was, that's all the way out towards State Street. But that was, you can't park in a detention basin. So what I came down to, actually, on my way home, I had the thought of, could we negotiate some spots from the Elsack Building? Because that's not too far away. It's far enough for people who walk. But could, could that be a possibility, at least for this year during the holidays, if the homeowners association would negotiate something with the Elsack Building? Because there's like, there's like 300 spots there. So I'd be, I'd be willing, you made the suggestion that someone come to a homeowners association meeting. I would be willing to do that. Now, I'm cycling off the board, but I would be willing to do that in the near term, to see if there's any, see if there's anything that we can suggest.
I think, I think the lady can come up with second public comment. We have a second public comment.
Later in the meeting.
Okay.
The rest, the rest of the agenda will be...
All right. Who's next?
Out of order. He made a, he made a comment on the Vice Chair's report.
Madam Chair, who's next in members' comment?
We'll come back to it.
Mr. Mack.
Yes. One of the things that I try to do is have a Zoom meeting with people to discuss possible solutions to problems and their concerns. I don't know about this. We need to have the right people talking together about it. I know that one of the members of your community came here with some ideas. And I maybe think it's possible to have certain areas marked off for parking, just not along the whole road, but just safe areas. And in addition, I think you need to have some kind of pedestrian safety measures, was also mentioned, as needed there. So I don't know how to resolve this issue. But, you know, I think there could be some parking areas, but I haven't done what Mr. Fisher has done by taking a walk and actually looking there. I just know when I drive by, sometimes there are cars parked there, and sometimes there are not. But I don't know if it's, would be helpful to have some kind of a Zoom meeting, but we'll see. I don't know.
That it? Thank you. Mr. Calabro?
Nothing.
Mr. Davis? Okay. Moving on. This leads us to our consent agenda, which includes minutes and, and bills list, liquid fuels program charge order, and a planning module for 484 Stupil Road. So do I have a motion to consider the adoption of the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, before we go further, I cannot, I have to abstain from the work session minutes. I don't know if you want to pull that out, or?
Okay, yes.
Other than that, I have no, no problem.
Okay. Can I have a motion on the rest of the consent agenda, please?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Now, is there any discussion from the Board on any of the items in the consent agenda?
Can you explain what the resolution is regarding 484 Stupil Road?
Yes, I can.
Reminder...
It's an administrative function to be able to submit the planning module for that property. It's required by the EP.
Which includes the sewage, you know, asking for EDUs.
It's a written statement that it was approved by the Board.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions from the Board? Any from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero, one abstention for the work session. Excuse me. Okay, so we have no Engineers' Report this evening, which leads us to our Solicitor's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only item on our report this evening is whether the Board wishes to take a position on any of the four zoning hearings that will be heard by the zoning hearing board on November 6. You've heard the Planning Commission's report, and if the Board wishes, you can discuss.
Would anybody like to discuss anything on the Solicitor Report? Let's...
Did you want to go?
Let's take it one by one. Clearview Drive, if everybody has looked at that in their packet, does anybody have any issues with Clearview Drive?
No issues here.
Okay. The NAC, the sign on the alternate wall, does anybody have a position on that? No, I will say is, it's no big deal, in my opinion, that it's just moot a little bit. It's really nothing to, you know, have a problem with. But it's up to everybody else. Anybody else have a position on that, that they would like to say, hearing none? We'll go on to Linton Hill, construction of two-story addition. Any problems? Not hearing none?
Yeah, they did, they did say that they would put a fence around the pool.
They did. That was...
According to Peggy's...
Required by ordinance.
Yes. Or a pool cover, something that deer or people can't fall into when they're not, when it's not used. And lastly, the proposed construction of a three-story mini storage building with a manager's apartment. I know that some of us have some problems with this. So I'd like to start by saying, I am not for that, that mini storage building having a manager's apartment in there. I don't think that's correct for, for our zoning, and it's just, to me, we shouldn't have anybody living there. Anybody else?
I, I agree with it.
May I make a suggestion? If the Solicitor could send a letter to the zoning hearing board with our stance in regards to this apartment, which is not allowable in that zoning district. And also, I didn't, I haven't seen it, maybe I missed it, but I think we had discussed the height of the building. Does it extend beyond 40 feet? Do we know that?
It's three-story, so it's not as big as the one that's near the NAC and on Pheasant Run.
Right.
It's smaller than that.
Okay, so it's below 40 feet?
Yeah.
Does the Solicitor know this?
I do not know the answer offhand, but I'm looking at the...
Well, looking on their applica, I don't see any...
Yeah, it's not requested as part of the current application.
Yeah, if they don't request relief for it, they have to comply with the ordinance requirements.
So what you're saying is it has to be below 40 feet?
Correct.
Okay. So maybe you could include that in your letter also to the zoning hearing board, provided everyone agrees.
Okay. So let's start with motions.
Does everyone agree?
I agree with them.
Yeah?
Kyle?
I disagree.
Okay.
Not on the height, on the apartment.
On the apartment, not the facility itself.
Yeah, yeah, the height, I agree with you, but yeah.
Okay. Since there, can I do the whole thing in one motion? Do I have to take them separately?
Well, I think there's one motion that can be put before the Board, and it would be to authorize the Solicitor to draft a letter to the zoning hearing board regarding the Board's opposition to the manager's apartment as not being allowed in that zoning district, and also to ensure that the height of the building is no more than 40 feet.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion from the Board? Any from the public?
Hello, everyone. Bradley Cooper, Newtown Grant Residence since 1999. And I just don't like the fact of, and I'll make it brief, that there's another application that we're just going to push into Newtown, destroy whatever's there, and not use existing buildings to get something in there, and we just don't care.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, I'll call that question. Seeing we have a motion and a second, we've heard public comment and comment from the Board. So can, can I have a consensus?
No, no.
All those in favor, yeah, sorry. All those in favor of having the Solicitor write the letter to the zoning hearing board denying the apartment and making sure of the height of the building, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes four to one. Okay, motion passes four to one.
Thank you, Madam Chair, that concludes our report.
Okay. Which brings us to our manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, general fund balance this evening is $5,134,530. Plan expirations before the board with no action required. This evening, we have chief foresight for the monthly emergency services department report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone, pleasure to be here. For the month of September, I'd like to report that we responded to 159 emergency calls. We completed 86 fire safety inspections in Newtown Township, two use and occupancy inspections, one fire alarm, and 39 fire safety inspections in Newtown Borough. Some of our highlights for September, we attended the Fire Service Advisory Board meeting on September 2nd. We continue to meet with the president of the Fire Association, president of Dallas, to discuss the future of the fire services. Assistant Chief Weaver and firefighter Cox attended the Bucks County Fire Marshals meeting. We conducted fire drills at both St. Andrew and Goodno Elementary Schools. Assistant Chief Weaver attended fire class on fire investigations. September 10th, we attended the Board of Supervisors, and thank you for recognizing my 50 years of service, I don't know how that happened because I haven't hit 50 yet, but. September, thank you, thank you. My wife does not buy that, I don't understand why that doesn't work. September 11th, we attended two ceremonies, once at Council Rock South High School, a flag raising ceremony in memory of the people that were killed on 9/11, and we also attended the luncheon at Council Rock North for the 9/11 recognition for first responders. Thank you to Council Rock for recognizing and remembering the folks that passed away on September 11th. September 15th, Assistant Chief Weaver and I attended a monthly line officers meeting for the Fire Association and the officers. Assistant Chief Weaver and I attended on September 18th, the Fire Services Commission meeting with elected officials. September 20th, we participated in the Coffee Cars and Cops event at Veterans Park with the Police Department, it's always a good time. September 24th, we attended the Board of Supervisors meeting and submitted a monthly report for August. I would remind you that October is Fire Prevention Month, if anybody has any questions or concerns in their homes, please give us a call, we'd be more than happy to come out and help you out any way we can. Also, the Fire Association is in need of volunteers, anyone that can breathe and is willing to volunteer, come out and see us and we'd be more than happy to give you a job and put you to work, so. Mr. Mack, you're coming off the board in December, I got the perfect job for you to take up the time that you're spending here. Maybe, if you can pass the test.
Can I operate the radio?
Maybe, maybe. That's my report for the month of September.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. I'm trying to get the nomenclature correct, you refer in here to the NFR and the minutes say ESD, which is the right?
We are in the process for the last couple of years of combining and actually operating as a combination fire department, which puts the career staff and the Fire Association together, and we refer to that as Newtown Fire Rescue. It helps us on a number of different ways with grant possibilities, and it's making the relationship between the Fire Association and emergency services much better.
So, these calls, 159, were the combined?
Combined, yes.
Companies?
Yes, I think in the report you see a breakdown, it's broken down into platoons, A-shift, B-shift, C-shift.
Yeah, I was, I'm going to ask you about that, what is the shifts, what do they refer to?
With us being seven days a week now, our, our career staffs are broken into A-platoon and B-platoon, that's the call volume that they have, and the C-platoon is the combination between the volunteers and the career staff. And the night is the nighttime response from the volunteers.
Okay, great, thank you for that, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Chief, I have a question in regards to the incident by district, and it says the different districts, and it says number of incidents, what categorizes an incident?
It's any emergency response that we respond to.
Okay, naturally, we respond to the most in Newtown Township.
Correct.
I see second on the list is Newtown Borough.
That's correct.
What incident would be responded to in Newtown Borough?
It could be any medical emergency or a fire call that we respond to.
And we send our paid firefighters in to take care of this?
Correct, it could be, it could be the career staff or the volunteer staff.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Madam Chair, we have one other item under our report for the board's consideration this evening. Please recall that we have gone out as required with an RFP for the township auditor, received three responses. Our finance director has included a memo in the board's packet for summarizing those proposals and is recommending that we stay with our current auditor, Malley LLP. So, the appropriate motion would be consider appointment of Malley LLP as township auditor.
Do I have such a motion?
Sure.
Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion from the board?
You said you received three proposals?
That's correct.
Do we have those proposals available to us?
You have Malley's, and then you have the summary from our finance director.
That's the Malley recommendation, I guess I didn't read that, sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the vote, all those in favor of appointing Malley LLP as auditor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed?
Abstained.
Okay, motion.
I didn't do my homework.
Motion passes. Huh?
Four, zero, one.
Yeah. Motion passes four, zero, with one abstention.
Thank you, Madam Chair, that's all we have under our report.
That brings us to our second round of public comment.
It wasn't that long.
Hi, Maria Parambo again, to respond to Dennis and John. John, thank you very much. It's a wonderful idea to have a Zoom, because it is very, very hard to get like the master board together, it's, it's a trip and a half trying to get six people together. And that is probably one of the best ways that we can have a discussion about what's the best thing. You gave, and Dennis gave, different ideas on what can happen. I guess my apologies to you, because I'm not anything but honest, I didn't know Chet, I talked to Chet three days ago, and I didn't know you were going to be walking with him. And that annoys me to no end but for Chet's, because I want to thank you for doing that. The idea that we can work out a solution is what I'm here for. And I was also here because things were said about using the quarters and that kind of thing, and I did, we've actually had cars towed, okay? That's because people leave them there and go on vacation, they don't, they aren't there when they come back. The thing with, that we would have to do is have a meeting, Zoom or whatever, and then bring it back to each of our groups, because we work for our people. Chet doesn't have a total say, I don't have a total say, nobody does, it's all done as it's done here. I welcome the, the idea of doing that, so that we can have some kind of solution to this, but I will tell you point blank, first off, LSAT, we're talking about mostly people in the townhomes. LSAT is a good half mile or more, the parking, from the closest town, townhomes. The ones, what about the ones that are near State Street, go make people walk a mile? That is not feasible, it just isn't feasible, because it's, people aren't going to do it. The other thing is where the basin is, that might be lovely for the people that are off State Street, but that's going to do absolutely nothing for the people who are near, who are on Penn, or on all the other ones that are way down the other side, because we all know that Fountain Farm is about a mile long. Yeah, it's a mile. You're not, people coming with gifts or turkeys or whatever are not going to walk a mile. They're not going to park in a parking lot that's a mile away to get, we all know that it's just not going to happen. So, I think that while the possibility of them was a good idea, the viability and the, the idea that they are going to be sustained and fix this problem is just not going to happen. And I have heard people saying, some people say they'll fight it, and other people go, it's only 25 bucks. And then I hear somebody else saying, well, that's how the township's making their money. I don't want to hear that either. So, while I'm standing here seeming to, and I didn't know the protocol, and I apologize, Ms. Chairwoman and Mr. Vice Chair and everybody else, I just didn't know the protocol. But I really do appreciate that we have this opportunity. But if I wasn't on the board, if I didn't see the flying tickets on the cars when I took my walks, I would never know this was happening. And I've been on the board and on the master board for over five years. So, there is still, we need to, we can work on the parking issue, but we also need to work more on the communication issue, because you just can't arbitrarily say to somebody, start ticketing that street, it's just not fair, and we are not that, this township, people in this township are not that way. So, thank you very much, I'm going home and having dinner.
Yeah, so I would suggest, since Mr. Fisher has, hello? Since Mr. Fisher has taken initiative, and only two, you realize only two supervisors can be together at a meeting without it being public and subject to all the legal restrictions that are involved, you're saying be open, but there are restrictions, so we can't make any decision, but we could certainly talk to about it, just as we are talking to the Borough about the fire services agreement, which is something I want to bring up next. But, if we do something, I'll have to converse with Mr. Fisher about this, because I'm just speaking for myself on this, the two of us could be on some kind of a Zoom meeting with representatives from your group, and I know this from your association, there's pro and con here, even amongst you people, yes? That's how it came to us, somebody was vehemently opposed to parking on that roadway, okay? But, let's try to work on ideas, not a solution, because we can't make a decision, we can discuss ideas.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for public comment?
Ma, you're taking your seats, I wasn't trying, I just wanted to say, I wasn't trying to get, get Chet into trouble.
No, you're not, he's always in trouble.
Good evening, Elon Strominger, I live at the Reserve Newtown. Up until about last January, I never took one tiny bit of interest in local politics like this, and then my wife brought it to my attention that there was rumors of a sewer plant that was going to be built a mile from my house, so for the last 10 months or so, I've been coming to these meetings and learning more about sewage and sewers than I ever wanted to. Madam Chairwoman, when you say that the project is dead, I will take you at your word. But I think one thing that I learned tonight is, I think the thing that bothers me most is the lack of information flow and the poor transparency of a project that, quite frankly, would be transformational to our community. And we have four candidates running for two open board seats in two weeks, and I guess I would just like to say to them, please take from this experience, and when there are projects that are transformational to our community, do your best to make sure that we find out about them and we have an opportunity to offer our input, thank you.
Thank you.
John DiApril, Newtown Grant, again. Mr. Mack's comments on social media, says he gets in trouble, well, what do you want? The people that go to his sites, they're all complainers, not from Newtown and from other places even, he gets it from all over. I used to monitor, I used to look at it and laugh, I kept on asking him to resign, and he blocked me, so I can't look at it any longer. Also, he mentioned that, about sewer property, that Mr. Worthington was complaining, he's not the only interest in that property, in fact, that property's been in flux, in the flux for almost 10 years now, way back to when the Asian guy used to own it, so that's it, thank you.
Anybody else from public, for public comment?
Can I say one more thing? Okay, I usually say this before the elections, you know, election time, it's coming up soon, everybody get out and vote, I won't tell you who to vote for, but you should vote for the most qualified, not for your party, vote for the most qualified, and remember, this will affect your taxes, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to other business, is there any other business?
I wanted to find out what's happening with the agreement with the Borough regarding fire services, can you give us an update?
Sure. Yes, we've given them the, what we all came to, well, most of us came to a consensus at our work session, we relayed that to the Borough Council, and so far, they have only come back with a negative response. So, eventually, we're going to have to send them a letter that says this is, this is the price we're offering, we've already gone through half a year of going back and forth and negotiating, and that came to no, no avail whatsoever, so.
Personally, I thought that we were going to bring this up about the letter at this meeting, and because that would make it official. What you're saying is somebody told them, but they could have just heard us from the work session.
That's exactly what they did, yes.
Okay, so that's how they were informed?
No, they were informed because I made a call.
We did not give anybody authority to make any kind of offer to them, I think we need to practice an official way of dealing with this, and from my understanding, the official way to deal with this is to have our solicitor send a letter like their solicitor sent to us, to make it official, that's.
And I agree, but I wanted to give them some time to come to this themselves, after giving them all the options and them listening to the work session that we had, I just didn't want to force it down their throat yet, but certainly in November, I think it would be appropriate for our solicitor to write them a letter stating, you know, what we have agreed on, and take it from there. So, it's only a finite point that we can let this go on.
If I may interject, I think that we've been more than fair enough, but just to go back, and maybe the solicitor could. go back, and maybe the solicitor can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're going through all these motions, didn't they terminate the services with us?
Yes, they did.
Okay. So to me, it, it's over. They terminated it, and we keep trying to go back to negotiate to no avail, but the bottom line is, they're the ones that backed out of the deal, not us. They terminated the service with us. So in my opinion, once they sent that letter, it pretty much said they really didn't want to deal with us anymore.
I think I will always try to find a solution instead of just letting it go, because as we all know, they need fire coverage. One way or the other, they're going to have to come to terms with it, because their houses won't be, you know, won't be insured if they don't have fire coverage, so.
Understood, Madam Chair, but I do believe you were the one that said that come January they will not have services. And again, they will not have services because they requested not to have services. So you're, I know you're doing this humanitarian effort here, but they didn't want us. And I, I don't understand why we're bending over backwards and not even getting what we want to the, to the Borough that said, "We want to terminate our services, the services with you." So I, you know, I, I just, I still, I'm still baffled that you at one meeting said, "Well, I guess we won't do anything. They're not going to have services come January." And now, it's like we're doing everything we can to appease someone that doesn't want us. It's almost like trying to make friends with someone that hates you. I don't understand.
Just, just to clarify, Phil, I wasn't referring to the first letter where they said they want to terminate. I was referring to the second letter where they said, "Here are the conditions under which we want to renegotiate."
But the second letter would never have been initiated if we didn't go back and beg them to, to work with us.
Begged or whatever.
I'm, 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 that's all. That's all I have to say. I don't get it.
My perspective is they were willing to do something to create an agreement.
Yeah, they were willing to back out. They told us they didn't want to deal with us. I, I...
Well...
All right. Just, just give them services for free. We, we already called on them. I mean, the chief said we called on them, so just give them services for free. Our tax, we're calling that taxpayer money?
We won't do that.
Our taxpayer mon... Our taxpayer money is going to pay for our paid firefighters to enter into the Borough with no compensation. Let's just keep doing it. Let's, everybody Newtown Township, pay for your firefighters to go into the Borough, and the Borough doesn't even want to compensate us for it. And they, caboot, they told us they didn't want our services.
Well, they said they wanted to renegotiate our services, but...
Second time, the second time. First time they sent us, the first time they sent us a not-so-nice letter...
That's correct.
Saying they wanted to terminate, so we went back on our knees to ask them, "Oh, please, no, work with us, work with us." I, I just, I don't understand. But let, the chief can use his time to go into the Borough. We're paying for the chief. They're not paying for the chief. Well, let's, what the heck? You talk about taxpayer money. Everybody's throwing around $9 million, which wasn't from us. $9 million was the Sewer Authority money, but when we talk about taxpayer money paying for services of firemen full-time, it's okay to send them into the Borough?
Yeah. I don't think it's okay to do that. I think they have to pay for service, and if they won't, well, that will be the end of things. But I will try, until the last day, until, to try to make a deal.
We'll remember that statement.
Okay.
Wow. Sorry I bled this up.
It's okay.
All I'm trying to do is get what we kind of had a consensus for at the work session. Why have a work session? Which you wanted a work session, so we had a work session. We had a consensus. My suggestion is, based on that consensus, we need to vote on whether we should send this one-year contract that we discussed...
Right.
Officially through our solicitor. That's all. I'm not saying who begged who, what, or when, or where. Just that one item on the agenda. Thank you.
Is there any other business? Hearing none, I'll adjourn this meeting at 8:35. Thank you.